Ready? Yes. Good. All right, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I'd ask Commissioner Gonzalez to lead us in a prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us, all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We come before you this afternoon, Lord, asking for guidance, wisdom, knowledge, and patience. Lord, we ask that you come and be with us throughout this meeting as we conduct business that pertains to San Juan County, and that we may make the best decisions made for San Juan County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Clark Kuhn, will you use the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. If you'll have a seat, make sure you turn your cellphones off, please. And at this time, I'll need a motion to go into the canvas board.
I move that the commission call to order the county canvassing board.
Okay, I have a first, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. All right. Go ahead, Ms. Kuhn.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I come before you today with results from the 2025 regular local election. There were 13,619 total ballots cast, resulting in a 16.7% turnout. There were 3,921 early votes cast and 8,585 election day votes cast. There were 1,116 ballots delivered to the absentee board, of which 1,113 were accepted, three were rejected. There were five overseas military hand-tallied ballots and three regular absentee hand-tallied ballots. Same-day voter registration was down significantly from the general election, which is to be expected. A total of 82 people registered using same-day registration during the book's closed period. There were no provisional ballots issued. The New Mexico Department of Justice, along with watchers from Observe New Mexico, were at several different polling locations with no reported issues. We will send notice to the Secretary of State to have them order a recount for the Bloomfield Municipal Judge that was separated by six votes, Farmington Municipal School Board Member, District Three, separated by eight votes, and Aztec Municipal School, District Three, separated by four votes. The state canvassing board will officially order the recounts when they meet on November 25th, and we are anticipating a recount the week of December 1st. I would like to take a moment to extend our heartfelt gratitude to all the departments that assist us, including Human Resources, Finance, Legal, Emergency Management, the County Manager's Office, Parks and Facilities, Safety, Sheriff's Office, IT, and Public Relations. It takes a village, and we're so very grateful for everybody in the county. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you so much for all your hard work before, during, and after.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, just, I wanted to commend you. At the voting place in Chippewa, there was big, you know, sign of your district and, you know, what you're voting on. Because I was getting calls, like, is there anybody I'm voting for, or is it just the bond?
Yeah.
So, all the information that you had out there was very, very useful for those casting their ballots. So, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. It is still a new election. It's really only been going on since 2019, and so the public is still getting used to these. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the report of the canvass and issue a certificate of canvas of the results of the election.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Alyssa. All right, before we go into the regular meeting, I wanted to just say thank you to our veterans, who all is a veteran here in our audience. Okay? Thank you very much for your service. And I just wanted to say earlier today, the Daughters of the American Revolution Desert Gold Chapter laid two wreaths outside of our administration office. You may have seen that as you walked in, they're kind of hanging on the side. Tomorrow, on November 11th, we will honor the brave men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces, dedicating their lives to protecting our nation and the freedoms we hold dear. Their courage, sacrifice, and unwavering commitment reminded us that the blessings of liberty come at a great cost. On Veterans Day, we express our deepest gratitude to all who have worn the uniform past and present for their service, resilience, and devotion to our country. May we never take for granted the peace and security of their sacrifice. May we continue to uphold the values they so selflessly defended. Those who have served or are active, I appreciate you for raising your hand. Thank you. All right. So now, I need a motion to go into the regular meeting. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to go into the regular meeting.
Let me have to approve the agenda.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Okay. I move that we approve the agenda.
Madam Chair. We got to go into the regular meeting.
Madam Chair, can we make a motion to adjourn the canvas board meeting?
Oh, we didn't do that? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I move to adjourn the canvas board meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now, we can go into the regular meeting. So, do I have a motion to go into the regular meeting?
Adjournment.
Okay.
You're good.
Okay, so now. All right, so do I have an approval? Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, we do not have any changes to the agenda tonight.
Okay.
As I presented.
All right. So, do I have an approval for the agenda?
I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a person, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So now, we'll go on to the consent agenda. And I'll read these. Number one, consideration of regular meeting minutes for October 21st, 2025. Consideration of FY '26 budget adjournment. Number five, resolution number 252637. Three, consideration of treasure check register for October 2025. Four, consideration of finance registers for October 2025. Five, consideration of renewal bid 232408. Price agreement for the purchase of hot mixed asphalt to CNE Concrete Eak of Floravista NM and Old Castle Southwest Group of Farmington, New Mexico. Number six, consideration of grant authority to county manager to execute joint powers agreement and preservation agreement with Historic Preservation Division of the New Mexico Department of Cultural Affairs. And number seven, consideration of authorization of county manager to execute the MOU with the 11th Judicial District for improvements to Aztec District Court House costing in excess of $1,135,000. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the seven consent agenda items.
I'll say.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries. All right, so now we'll go into the first item. And this will be the consideration of resolution number 252634. A resolution calling upon the New Mexico Racing Commission to reconsider its approval as per Sunray's request to move the racing license from Sunray Park to Clovis, New Mexico, or issue the sixth racing license. Mr. Stark.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As the commission is aware, San Juan County has had a longstanding 28-year relationship with Sunray Park and Casino. During this time, serving as county manager, actually being employed with San Juan County since 2006, I would describe this as a strong working relationship, where we work closely together to coordinate special events, shared parking, facility usage, even repairs post-storm events. In order to maintain both a strong and vibrant facility, McGee Park and Sunray, we see those phenomenously connected. This also includes twice reworking the lease structure to assist with times of economic difficulty, most recently being COVID. The commission back then assisted with that. In addition, we work really closely with Sunray management as part of the McGee Park Master Plan, that you'll hear more about tonight, to find ways to add amenities to Sunray, specifically in the infield, to bring both new community facilities as well as new economic opportunities for Sunray. So needless to say, it was a shock to hear the day before a monthly state racing meeting from our lobbyist on October 22nd, that the Sunray Ownership Group was presenting and requesting at the same meeting to move the horse racing license from Sunray to Clovis, thus eliminating, potentially eliminating 120 jobs here. 75% of those employees are Native American. An entertainment venue for the county, eliminating the horse racing industry that exists here and all the vendors that participate and benefit from that industry, rental income to the county, and the potential for an empty, unused building, because if the racing license moves, the casino license would go with it, and ultimately we'd be left with the facility that couldn't be used as it is currently today. Upon learning of the proposed transfer request on very short notice, we were able to round up two of our county commissioners, myself, three of our state legislators attended a meeting the next morning. We also had Farmington City Council members, the mayor of Farmington, Four Corners Economic Development, attending remotely, listening into that meeting. So that just shows the gravity of the concern relative to what was being proposed to the Racing Commission. As I know two of you know, we were unable to provide comment regarding this matter. And ultimately, it was voted on by the Racing Commission to move forward with the transfer of the license, which puts in place a 45-day comment period, which expires on December 4th. And so anybody interested in providing a comment regarding this matter has to do so by December 20, or December 4th. And then upon receipt of comment, a 15-day period by which a public hearing will be scheduled, as indicated by the chair of the Racing Commission at that meeting, will be scheduled in Clovis. So before the commission tonight is consideration of a resolution, and this resolution would serve as the commission's formal comment back to the Racing Commission, reciting the facts and the events leading up to the surprise announcement on October 23rd. So if I could, Madam Chair, I would suggest maybe reading this resolution into the record and also providing some awareness for citizens on kind of the events leading up to this and some of the facts.
Okay, I think that would be good. Thank you.
All right, Resolution 252634. A resolution calling upon the New Mexico Racing Commission to reconsider its approval of Sunray's request to move the racing license from Sunray Park to Clovis, or to make the transfer to Clovis contingent on the issuance of a sixth racing license to San Juan County. Whereas, San Juan County has leased its horse racing track and gaming facilities, formerly known as San Juan Downs, to Sunray Park and Casino since 1997. Whereas, over the past 28 years, the horse racing and gaming conducted at Sunray has provided entertainment, economic activity, and annual rental income to the county. And whereas, Sunray currently employs approximately 120 families through direct employment and contributes approximately $1.25 million annually in county revenue. Whereas, the racetrack and gaming facilities at Sunray Park are an essential component of San Juan County's economic diversification. And whereas, Sunray has profited from its lease with the county, having netted an estimated $400 million since 1997, using conservative calculations. And whereas, the owners of Sunray previously asked for and received abatements in rent from the county when a competing Indian gaming casino was constructed, and also during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, the county has been always willing and ready to work with Sunray to help ensure its success as a going concern. And whereas, on October 22nd, 2025, the county learned that the New Mexico Racing Commission had received a request from Sunray to transfer the racing license to Clovis, and that the Racing Commission planned to act on the request at its meeting the next day, October 23rd, 2025. And whereas, despite the 28-year relationship between Sunray and the county, it appears that the owners of Sunray purposely kept the county in the dark as it worked on the project to move the license to Clovis, raising serious concerns about transparency and public trust. Whereas, learning of the proposed request for transfer, members of the San Juan County State House and Senate delegations, members of the San Juan County Commission, Farmington City Council, and the Four Corners Economic Development Director attended the Racing Commission meeting in an attempt to convince the Racing Commission to table or postpone consideration of the matter, or to allow the San Juan County delegation to speak against moving the license. And whereas, the Racing Commission refused to postpone consideration of the matter and refused to allow anyone from the San Juan County delegation to even speak in opposition. And whereas, had the Racing Commission permitted the San Juan County delegation to speak, the delegation would have pointed out how movement of the racing license to Clovis from Farmington would eliminate stable jobs, reduce public revenue, and undermine years of economic development work carried out in partnership with the state of New Mexico. And whereas, there is no need to transfer the Sunray racing license, since there is a sixth unissued license, which the Racing Commission could issue to Clovis, avoiding the shuttering of a facility valued at $28.5 million as a going concern, the laying off of 120 employees, and the harm cost to San Juan County's economy. And whereas, after a one-sided presentation by Sunray in favor of moving the license, the Racing Commission gave approval for movement of the racing license to Clovis, and stated that an opportunity for public comment would be provided at a later date in Clovis during the Christmas holidays. And whereas, a public hearing should be scheduled outside of the Christmas holidays and should be in a neutral location such as Albuquerque. Now therefore be it resolved that the San Juan County Board of County Commissioners urges the New Mexico Racing Commission to do the following. Number one, reconsider and reverse its approval of Sunray's request to move the San Juan County racing license to Clovis. Number two, issue the sixth racing license to Clovis, or make the transfer approval contingent on San Juan County receiving the sixth license. And number three, if the Racing Commission does not reconsider its approval of the license movement to Clovis, reschedule the time and location of the public hearing to a neutral location at a time after the Christmas holidays. Passed, approved, and adopted this 10th day of November 2025.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stark. Commissioners, are there any other questions or statements, comments for Mr. Stark?
I think this resolution covers everything that we traced the other day. I think it's very well written, and I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Yes, a second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's an aye down there, too. Opposed?
Need help, Ma'am Chair?
Hearing none, motion carries. Do you need any help? Good to go?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and we'll move on to the next agenda item. And this will be a presentation by Mr. Perel, San Juan County Road Classification Maintenance and Acceptance Reclassification Procedures.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I wanted to give you all what I hope is a timely refresher on the different classifications of roads we have here in San Juan County, what the maintenance obligation we have for each of those classifications is, and what the procedures are by which those roads are either accepted or reclassified. You may have experienced that the times of year we typically receive complaints about our roads are when it rains and when it snows. It didn't rain a whole lot this summer, so maybe we've been lulled into complacency with our staying fresh on, or what our road policy states on these matters, but I do anticipate it may snow, and you may get those calls that you typically get. So I wanted certainly to make sure you were current and refreshed on some of this information. So, first slide is road maintenance responsibility in San Juan County. Obviously, there's the New Mexico Department of Transportation. They maintain our state and federal highways as they pass through the county. Some examples are US 550 and 64. These are federal highways, state highways, New Mexico 516 between Farmington and Aztec, 371, 173, 574 would be another. And then you have your city streets. Those are the roads within municipal boundaries of Farmington, Aztec, Bloomfield, and Kirtland. And then within the unincorporated portion of the county, we, being the Public Works Department, perform maintenance on roads with the designation of county maintained or lesser county maintained. So just a quick summary of our road program. Currently has 58 full-time positions allocated to it within our administrative, engineering, construction, maintenance, traffic, vector control, and fleet operations. We do maintain 742 miles, or approximately 1,490 lane miles of roadway. Of those, 663 are classified as county maintained, 79 as lesser county maintained. Further breakdown of those, you know, 742 miles, 245 are paved. The remaining 497 are unpaved gravel roads. You recall that each year, you do submit or authorize a resolution to the New Mexico Department of Transportation that certifies what our annual road mileage is. And at any time, the status of any road in the county can be viewed at sjcounty.net/maps. And my marching orders are given to me by you all by way of our San Juan County Road Policy. That was revised, actually almost a year ago to the day, in November of 2024. So we're going to go through three different classifications of roadways, first one being fully county maintained. You can see in the top right, that is a roadway with county maintained status. That's how it's signed. So this definition is directly from our road policy and reads, "County maintained road is a road that has been accepted for full county maintenance. Each county maintained road is assigned a number and marked with a blue and gold sign. Services on such roads may include routine maintenance, dust control, replacement of base course, installation and repair of drainage structures, snow removal, puddle repair, bridge construction and repair, signage, resurfacing, weed control, and mowing." So if a road or car, I would suggest our county maintained roads have bumper-to-bumper coverage by the county. Quick example of some roadways, I'll do this for each of our classifications. So this is County Road 3000. It's a fully county maintained road. It is paved. I won't go through each of those bullet points, but that was the maintenance we performed on that road within the last 12 months. So we've been mowing, we've been replacing signs, did some snow removal last winter, we crack sealed, we actually chip sealed, which would be a major overhaul project, repainted the center lines, did some cover replacement, cleaned some ditches. So again, a full maintenance package. Example of an unpaved road, again with designation of fully county maintained, this is Road 3180. We accepted this road in 1995 as part of the Panorama Heights subdivision. It's located off Road 3100. Again, we're grading that road, we're mowing that road, we're having dust control, we're replacing signs. This is pretty indicative of what a full maintenance package looks like for an unpaved road with a county maintained classification. Next classification is lesser county maintained. So this is a longer definition, and I won't read all of it, but the key point there is the third sentence, which reads, "Services on such roads shall be one initial application of gravel, if necessary, and blading twice a year thereafter." The other important point is in May 2009, this board, or the board in place at the time, removed reclassification from a non-maintained road to a lesser county maintained road from our road policy. Perhaps I can explain why I think that may have happened with this next slide. So, as it's defined, a lesser county maintained road, it's eligible for a one-time application of gravel and twice annual grading. All other services included in a fully county maintained road maintenance classification are excluded. This is not an effective, you know, way to maintain around in actual practice. So roadway materials degrade over time and do require replacements. Gravel doesn't last forever. Some of these roads were re-accepted in 1999, or 26 years removed. It's unreasonable to think that gravel would last 26 years. These roads, by and large, weren't fully engineered, in my opinion. They lacked drainage infrastructure, and oftentimes during weather events, they experience what I would say is disproportionate damage, and result in a similarly disproportionate maintenance burn for our department. So, I think in seeing that, after, you know, 10 years of application, the board in 2009 recognized that this was not a maintenance classification, which in practice can be effectively implemented. Again, with a twice-a-year annual grading, if, again, we're calling LCM roads vehicles, we change the oil. So when tires wear out, we don't replace those. When windshield breaks, we don't replace those. In reality, we do. We do have to add gravel to these roads as they degrade, though we do it pretty sparingly, trying to stay within the confines of the definition of the road classification. So here's an example, at the end of a lesser county maintained road. This is Road 3665, again in Floravista, located off Road 3000. You can see in the photograph, it's quite narrow, which you also see or don't see, or it lacks any real drainage infrastructure, and the road itself is quite steep. That makes it very susceptible to erosion during rainfall events. And again, I provided our last 12-month maintenance history, so it's graded three times in the last 12 months, albeit one very close to the end of that 12 months. So, meeting the letter of the definition, you know, we've given it its two oil changes. In this photograph, it actually appears to be, it's in pretty good shape, that might be indicative of the fact that it was maintained just over a month ago. And again, the last definition is non-county maintained. So I think there's a lot of confusion surrounding non-county maintained roads, but again, this is the definition. In the road policy, a non-county maintained road is a road that has not been accepted for county maintenance. Each non-county maintained road is assigned a number by rural addressing for E911 compliance and marked with a red and white sign. Non-county maintained roads may be public or private. Private roads and other roads that have not been accepted for county maintenance are non-county maintained roads for the purposes of this paragraph. The county shall not maintain any county maintained, non-county maintained road. The procedure for reclassification is as defined in section six of the road policy. So just some additional info on why these are given a sign by us. So the guidance comes from the Census Bureau that any time a public or private street or shared driveway serves as the primary ingress or regress of three or more residences, it'd be named or numbered, that so our sheriff's office, our fire department, our emergency services can find folks in the event of an emergency. So creation of a non-county maintained road by rural addressing does not constitute road acceptance, and no maintenance services- acceptance, and no maintenance services are provided by Public Works. It's important to note that doing so would be a violation of the anti-donation provisions of the New Mexico State Constitution. So how do they happen, I guess is really the question. So within our subdivision regulations, new subdivisions that come before you for approval do need to have provisions for maintenance of the roadways. That can be accomplished either by county acceptance of the road, by a homeowners association, by a road maintenance association. However, quite a bit of the land division that occurs within the county is done by exemption, or subdivision exemption, whereas a property owner can carve off one lot every five years without the need of a full subdivision review. They can similarly do what's called a family exemption, where they're carving off portions of their property for members of their family. So when that happens, you get more than those three residences on a primary ingress or regress. We give it a road name and number, and what was once a private or shared driveway now may have the impression that it's a county road that is simply something that we choose not to maintain. That's certainly not the case. I mean, it is governed by other rules. So this is a cause of what I would suggest is frequent confusion and consternation. I know I get quite a few calls about it, I'm sure you do too. Just as a statistic, there are currently 395 miles of roads with a non-county maintained designation in the county. So a lot of people are living on roads with no maintenance. Again, here's an example of what an NCM road might look like. This is Road 3692, located off Road 3,000. You can see from the photograph, this road is never formally built, and it's built using native materials, and you can see that by the kind of the river rock that's in the road base. It's very narrow, has no drainage infrastructure. It wouldn't be a road that, in its current condition, we would accept. So how do roads get accepted? That is similarly governed by the road policy. Took this from Section 6. It's also governed by Appendixes A and C. So initially getting reclassification, any member of the public with real interest on a road may become the applicant, and they can complete an application included as Appendix A of the road policy. Those applications do need to include an environmental assessment, right-of-way documents, construction inspection records, and an engineer certification on road construction. The applicant is responsible for all those costs. Once we've received a complete application, Public Works, or an incomplete application, we'll complete our review of that application. And if it's at a point where it meets the standards set forth in the road policy and the associated appendices, we will bring it to you for your consideration. So again, only applications meeting the standards of Appendix A and Appendix C for approval or conditional approval will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration. Board of County Commissioners to consider the resolution of acceptance. The Board of County Commissioners may condition its approval on completion of improvements or execution of documents. Conditional approvals become void six months following approval if conditions are not met. So it's not uncommon for a developer to still have some loose ends when they're constructing a road, and in order to not hold up an approval process, we may bring forth a conditional approval that may say the road is ready to be accepted after paving operations are complete. They may have a project that is completed, or subdivision completed, in January, they can't pave the road until April, and that would be a good example of that. The other way roads can be accepted or reclassified is through the creation of, or by way of a special assessment district. This is a tool which residents can use to fund road reclassification and the associated improvements. It's set forth by state law, and property owners can petition the Board of County Commissioners to create a county improvement district. This is essentially a taxation district. So that does require two-thirds participation of the property owners, and that's based on assessed value. So if there's, you know, a road with, let's say, 100 properties, if all values are equal, that would be two-thirds of the residents, or 67, would need to participate. If there's a road with, let's say, 10 residences, and one's a $5 million property, and the remainder are, you know, $100,000 properties, that million-dollar property would carry a lot more weight in the creation of that district. So the board may create a county improvement district, construct the project, pay for the project, and assess the cost of that project against the benefiting tract, and impose an improvement district property tax. I understand this is in place in Bloomfield Irrigation District is one good example, as I understand, folks within that district who pay a taxation increment, and that funds the operations of that ditch. So there's two ways. If that district were to be created, we could fund it with local dollars, just out of our general fund, and be repaid over time, or we can issue general obligation bonds, and those similarly assessed and recouped upon, it's just not dollars and cents that are coming out of our general fund. So that is my presentation. I would certainly be happy to answer any questions you have, and go back to any slides if you have questions along the way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perel. That's a lot of information, a lot of roads. Are a lot of the ones that are non-county maintained go to a well site?
Madam Chair, I would say no. Most of them are residential streets. There are some that are numbered for industry use, but by and large, it's residential streets.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. So now we'll move on to number three, consideration for award of proposal 252605, insurance broker to USI Southwest, Inc. of El Paso, Texas, Ms. Singleton. Welcome.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for hearing me today. I wanted to tell you just a little bit, because people tend to confuse the subject, the difference between getting insurance and asking for a broker. We have all kinds of insurance for all different kinds of things for the county, and because we have all different kinds of risks and a tremendous amount of property and people, and finding the right insurance for all of those different things is a gigantic process. So we ask for the professional services of a broker who is better equipped to find those resources, send out things, and give us a good representation of what we need at the best possible price, which is what we're after, right? So this year, it is time to put out a proposal, an RFP, for brokers to do that. We started out with, back in September, Central Purchasing issued a request for proposals. We got, we sent 14 invitations out, we got four offers back. Then the evaluation committee, which was put together, looks at all the different responses with the help of purchasing department to guide us, and we go through a process of deciding the values of those things, and attempt to do it in a subjective manner, objective a manner as we can, to make it fair. And we went through that process, and in the evaluation criteria, the highest rated response came from USI Inc., Southwest of El Paso, Texas. They're charging a commission of $72,000. The initial contract term is in November. The first insurance they would buy us would be for the end of March, beginning of April. So we have that time period where we go through things with them to send out their bids to insurance, so we have to have that separation. So the contract is for a possibility of four years. We look at it every year. If we both still like it, both us and the brokerage, then we can renew it, and we can do that up to three times, so the maximum length of time is four years before we go back out to RFP. That is it. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Commissioners, do you have any other questions about Ms. Singleton?
Madam Chair, so if the new, the new company, it'll be for one year?
At a time.
One year at a time?
Yeah, they have, our RFP is for four years. We don't have to go back and do this process again if at the end of each year, we're happy with it and they're happy with it.
Mr. Stark, how many years did Kaiser serve at County?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totachini, gosh, I bet it's been 16 years?
25.
25. Now, that's going through at least the last two iterations of going out to RFP to procure a broker, and so that's done every four years. So we're at the end of that four-year broker arrangement, so that's what's requiring us to go back out to RFP and to do so before our next renewal of insurance on March 31st of next year. So we're required to go do this per state law, per procurement law.
I see that our current broker didn't score the highest as an of the, you know, can you share what criteria was used to make your selection?
They all scored fairly equally on most of our criteria, which was the basic offering of services that we requested. There were six sets. The highest number of points was awarded for the cost, and they were the highest cost of those that we had to look at, and the one that we picked happened to have the lowest cost, and that was the biggest point differential.
Do you have any other? So the significant driver for this was the cost.
Turned out to be, yes.
The cost. And then, of course, looking, we're looking at the scoring as well, and were there any other factors that made the significant for the first and the second, the one that came in second?
The one significant factor that the other two did not have was that they were not local, and Kaiser was awarded full points for that, but it was not enough to make up for the cost differential.
Okay.
I see the spread is significant. It's 100-point spread. Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments for Ms. Singleton?
Madam Chair, you know, what I like about the county a lot of times is the businesses that are local, because they know the area, they know the people, they know the leaders, and, you know, sometimes that's, change is hard, but I guess there's a cost factor. And, but, you know, I don't know if they even ask for, you know, to negotiate any of this, or maybe this is a done deal now. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totachini, it'd probably be best to have our chief procurement officer speak to that question and talk about that process that's used.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We cannot negotiate with someone who hasn't been scored the highest, and so that would not be something we can do.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Is there anything else, Mr. Stark or Mr. Sawyer, you want to add to this?
Madam Chair, just to add that that's under the procurement code, that we have to do that, that governs our procurement process, and so that's what guides our consideration of these proposals.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for your information. So, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman. If we did go with the USI Southwest, I would recommend that maybe we revisit that in one year. Can we do that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner McDaniel, yes, we would have that option, as Ms. Singleton indicated, then we could put that back out to RFP again and go through that process.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Is that all? So I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the award of proposal number 252605, insurance broker to USI Southwest Incorporated of El Paso, Texas.
Have a second?
So move.
Have the first and second, all in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna be a nay.
You're gonna be a nay?
Yes.
Okay. So let's take roll call. So, Madam Clerk, will you take roll call for me?
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Totachini?
No.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Aye.
And Chairman Fortner?
Yes. Okay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. Now we'll go ahead and we'll move on to number four, consideration of resolution number 252636, Mr. Sebedra, acceptance and approval of the San Juan County Outdoor Recreation Master Plan.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I come before you for consideration of resolution 252636. This is the acceptance and approval of San Juan County's Outdoor Recreation Master Plan. As many of you are all aware, San Juan County has partnered with Plan Collaborative and has completed the Outdoor Recreation Master Plan, funded and through a grant of the New Mexico Outdoor Recreation Division. This plan represents over a year in development, incorporating the public of over 1,700 different individuals participating. This outdoor recreation plan establishes a framework from 1, 5, 7 to 20 years to guide the county's effort in expanding, enhancing, and sustaining outdoor recreation opportunities. It identifies key opportunities, key priorities, and potential partnerships, funding sources, and policy tools to strengthen San Juan County as a premier outdoor recreation destination. This plan highlights outdoor recreation drives economic growth, identifies how to improve physical and mental health, and strengthens the stewardship of the county's natural resources. With that, I will turn it over to Miriam. She's been very engaged from the beginning with our Outdoor Recreation Plan, and...
Hi, so you have the A.J., I'm Diddy, I'm Ashley, 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 I'm Ashley. So hi, my name's Miriam Diddy, I'm a senior partner of Plan Collaborative, a consultant who's been collaborating with Stephen and then a couple of other folks in the county on this Outdoor Recreation Master Plan for the past year. And I'll kind of go through a little bit, giving you an overview of the plan itself and the process that led up to developing this plan itself. All right, here, this is... Some of the planned goals, again, include fostering public health and enhancing quality of life. In addition, it includes addressing the diverse recreation and fitness needs for all county residents, spanning various generations, so really considering both youth, teens, adults, and seniors across the county. Other goals include ensuring fairness and equitable access to local and community parks and trails to serve those with all ability levels. In addition, this, goals for this plan again are to plan for appropriate access to these local and community parks and trails and recreation offerings for all existing and future residential neighborhoods across the county. And actually, go back one more, thank you. So furthermore, other goals include cultivating these parks, trails, and outdoor recreation facilities that are designed to uplift the county's physical aesthetics and appeal overall. In addition, some goals, again, are dedicating parklands, recreation facilities, and programs to fulfill these county residents' recreation needs and aspirations, both current and future. Again, Stephen mentioned, one larger goal is to really strengthen the local economy through the support of the outdoor recreation industry overall, and really planning to devote resources to an open space network that interconnects trails, parks, open space, and educational institutions, establishments, and all these different residential clusters that comprise the entire county itself, and create these beautiful cultural landscapes that we all know, love, and cherish here in the Four Corners area. So some key focus areas, again, for the plan are enhancing that quality of life improvements, fostering really that economic vitality, promoting mental and physical health... fostering really that economic vitality, promoting mental and physical health while ensuring environmental responsibility for any existing and future recreation resources, but also kind of giving an overview for all these projects within equity and inclusion lens, so being considerate of all generations and all abilities for all these facilities, while also planning for long-term stewardship and partnerships to maintain all of these facilities, and also focusing on really developing a program that offers education and engagement for all county residents. So, some of the, the plan includes an overall inventory and assessment for the county-owned properties, as well as an overview of all the outdoor recreation facilities across the county, so not just county-owned, but federal and other owned properties. So, overall, there's, again, 370 miles of trails, a lot of wilderness areas, wildlife areas, fossil and geology areas, five off-highway vehicle areas, a lot of general recreation areas, 10 gravel adventure routes, a lot of, 12 water recreation sites, both rivers and lakes, 44 parks that range from mini parks to neighborhood parks, community parks, and regional parks, so different scales of parks, and then one large state park. So, for the county facilities themselves, we conducted an assessment, looking at the conditions overall for the county properties, as well as doing a initial assessment for the other recreational facilities that are not county-owned, to kind of understand and gauge overall what the conditions are across the county. So, here's kind of a sample of what that looks like in the plan, again, zooming in with a map showing the D and RGW Animus River Access Area, and the assessment and detail that our team kind of gave for that site. And then, again, this map is showing all the current county facilities across San Juan County. In addition, our team also put on, or did a gap analysis, is what it's called, so looking at the gaps in both regional access to these places, but also understanding different demographics, where people have disabilities, where seniors are, and kind of have more social challenges to access this outdoor recreation for health benefits.
Next, please.
So, in order to engage all the residents, which was over 17,000, or, yeah, 1,700, as Stephen mentioned, we had conducted different community outreach clusters, so being strategic of meeting people where they are and where they live, and engaging with each of these communities at different outdoor recreation events, so making sure that we're touching down and connecting with people that are interested in biking, and hiking, and running, off-roading, or the 4x4 activities, but also making sure that we're engaging folks in the Navajo Shiprock areas as well. So, our team, over several months, again, had several events that engaged all these different clusters, 1 through 6.
Next, please.
So, just a kind of brief overview of what that engagement looked like. We had nine public cluster events, engaging over 1,732, or in-person interactions with those community members, so speaking to county residents, youth, as well as adults and seniors, seeing what their interest were, what their needs were, but also understanding what gaps and future needs they, or desires that they want for outdoor recreation. We had in-person surveys, as well as online surveys, and also conducted several focus group sessions with key stakeholders, including the Bureau of Land Management, among others. And here's kind of just some snapshots of what that tabling looked like. But again, there is also a dedicated project website, as well as an online survey and a photo contest that accompanied this outdoor, our Outdoor Recreation Community Outreach Initiative. Next, please. So, some of the feedback, our team had compiled all the tabling input, as well as online surveys, to kind of distill our key takeaways for the county resident needs. So, here's kind of a snapshot of what that analysis looks like, with one question being, what kind of new outdoor recreational opportunities do they want to see? The majority of folks, our majority of folks really wanting to enhance those aquatic and river areas. They really cherish, again, the Animus and San Juan rivers, as well as the current lakes. And folks really, again, want more access to trails, both for different uses and overall just parks. Another kind of key question that we asked was, what types of, or what new types of outdoor recreation would they like, would they like to see added? So, again, folks really had a desire for more trail-based recreation, as well as overall parks and community facilities, and also a desire for more action and adventure recreation, which included a number of activities, including skydiving or splash pads and funds, or other activities that are considered more adventurous. And another kind of question, too, our key takeaway is that, what are people's favorite current outdoor recreation sites right now? A lot of it, again, is located in Farmington right now, but also people cherish the Navajo Dam or Navajo Lake, as well as just overall, all the open space that is available in San Juan County itself. Next, please. So, on top of that, we did another analysis, looking at the outdoor recreation industry across the county right now. So, using a lot of data from the Four Corners Economic Development Organization, we looked at the current outdoor recreation, outdoor recreation businesses across the county, and understanding how many folks they employ, as well as their estimated annual sales. And again, just some key takeaways from that kind of analysis, outdoor recreation right now makes up 2.3% of the US GDP and supports 4.5 million jobs nationally. And this sector grew 3.6% here in our state, which was actually faster than the overall growth in the US, which was 2.9%. In New Mexico alone, it has generated 3.2 billion in GDP, and it has supported overall 29,000 jobs. And in 2023, yeah, it grew across the state by 6.6%. And again, some of the fastest-growing activities now are hunting, trapping, kayaking, and kind of snow sports, at least across the state. But since 2019, the Outdoor Recreation Division has granted over 6.4 million, two-point projects that reach over 83,000 youths across the state. And in San Juan County alone, the sector now employs over 4,936 people, which is 7.98% of jobs for the county itself. And one of those grants I mentioned, from the Outdoor Recreation Division, in 2014, they had funded that gravel adventure guidebook, which you may all have heard about, which encouraged and fostered more tourism, engaging all these different beautiful open spaces for both locals and then others that are visiting the Four Corners area. Next, please. So, a little overview now of how we kind of took all this community feedback and compiled this and distilled this into our recommendations. So, you use, kind of categorizing everything that we heard, what are our needs, what are opportunities and gaps that needed to be filled by different folks and county residents, our team had organized and distilled several different recommendations into different categories, including recommended planning projects, recommended infrastructure improvements, recommended partnership and coordination initiatives, and recommended programming efforts, as well as recommended administrative projects. So, all of our projects in this master plan are organized by these categories, and then further, they are presented in the plan itself in Part 6, shown in that kind of purple box on the top right, as outdoor recreation system improvements and site-specific projects, which focus on county-owned facilities first, and then focus on engaging with other properties as well across the county. Additional sections in the recommendations include improving wayfinding and signage, so people know how to access these sites, and also learn about the sites themselves. The recommendations also include stewardship and maintenance procedures, as well as park provisions and recommendations for subdivision ordinances. I think another big component of this is capacity building and partnership agreements, because, again, a lot of other outdoor recreation sites are maintained and owned by other agencies, so those partnerships are critical to ensure their long-term sustainability and stewardship. And then, kind of lastly, the recommendations also go into flagship outdoor recreation amenities, and then encouraging education, marketing, and branding, and specific events that can engage those folks. So, all of these projects that we have in the plan itself are ranked with different priorities, so us kind of flagging what's priority one, then those near-term projects that can be tackled in 1 to 3 years, priority two, being midterm projects, so what could be addressed or implemented in 3 to 5 years, and then priority three is looking a little bit longer term for implementation over 5 to 7 years. So, next, please. Almost done. So, here's just kind of some snapshots of that recommendation section, where they're all organized, and then, again, this all kind of details, specific locations for some of these projects, as well as potential partners and funding sources as well to achieve them. Next, please. So, just some more snapshots, again. There is a very hefty funding matrix at the end that the county can use to pursue and fund some of these projects as well. And then, here's just an example of our kind of recommended signage that can be implemented at some county facilities. And then, in addition, all these recommendations have a planning level cost estimate summary, so breaking down what it may cost to implement these as well. That's, that's all I have right now, but, yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. That's pretty in-depth and very nice to see. The part that I liked the best was the wayfinding and the signage, because I'm always thinking, how do you not get lost out there? So, that's awesome. Thank you for that. Any comments, questions? Go ahead.
I have a question. I remember when we met at McGee Park, there was tribal people who were saying they would like a place where they could host a powwow or song and dance, or something related to what they enjoy. And where would they be able to go? Is that on the inner part of the racetrack?
Well, yes. I think a big part of this is also us designing some of the spaces for flexible use. So, for the, I think McGee Park is one that we identified as a larger, that could be categorized as a regional park, so it could be kind of used for those larger gathering activities, potentially, yeah.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, putting Miriam's statement, that's an appropriate facility that has a lot of possibility, and depending on the scale and the need, McGee Park would serve now.
Oh, another question. Remember how we have that flooding right at the entrance? They'll be taken care of, right?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totachini, it already has been.
Okay.
We actually, kudos to the Parks and Facility staff, working with the contractor that made improvements to the Arroyo to help buttress it. Public Works also assisted, so a team effort to get that done. And as you might recall, we put in an application for federal funding and the match requirements. We were successful in the New Mexico match, a fund request. So, fingers crossed that that project will be fully reimbursed to us by the federal government and the state of New Mexico.
Not that we get a lot of torrential rain, but in case it happened, we'd be okay.
Let's hope.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions for Miriam or Stephen?
It's a great presentation. Thank you.
So, this is an action item, so I'll need a motion. Did you have something else to say?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I was gonna say that. I'm sorry. I kind of got lost here. So, I wanted to mention the photo contest winners, and are they here, Scott Adamson, Jimmy Brown, and Jesse McChicken? Are they here?
Madam Chair, they're not present.
Okay.
We will make sure they get an Amazon gift card as advertised.
Okay.
It's not the laser that we were joking.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for that, and I really appreciate their participation in that. Sorry, I almost forgot.
I have one question. There's a place for archery, right? That I see that on there?
So, I think that's on the next agenda item, but we'll dive into the McGee Park archery, but, yeah.
Okay. Because I know there are a couple of individuals, they participate in those archery contests, and so, I think I was glad when I saw it on there.
Madam Chair, Madam Commissioner, there was a comment about archery. Of course, when we're evaluating what's feasible and what's not, of course, we always have to balance insurance requirements, what would be an appropriate place. What you'll see with this particular plan is there's a lot of areas that make sense for the private side to be able to be best suited for archery or other things. But that's the benefit and the beauty of this plan, is that it gives it an overall guiding framework for us to move forward with these opportunities.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Good tell. All right. Any, there's no other questions, comments, I'll need a motion.
So move.
Okay, I have a first.
I'll second.
Have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to Mr. Sebedra, McGee Park Master Plan Concepts and Design. We also have Mr. Miller here as well? Okay, welcome.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I will be short and hand it over to Mr. Greg Miller. But San Juan County and Plan Collaborative developed the McGee Master Plan to reimagine McGee Park as a modern, multi-use destination that serves residents and regional visitors. The plan organizes the site in five different development zones, the east parking space, central gatherings parking space, south gathering space, pond gathering space, and the racetrack infield. There was various public meetings, stakeholder meetings. This master plan was advertised, not only on a dedicated website, but KOB even ran a story on it. And we wanted to make sure that the master plan positions McGee Park as a regional hub for recreational use, tourism, community gatherings, while advancing economic growth and enhancing the quality of life throughout San Juan County.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Chair and Commissioners, yes, it's fun to be at this point. We've updated the plans that have had a few iterations that have gone through the public meetings, as well as some pretty in-depth meetings with staff, and just wanted to run through with you what the plan shows and how it supports the goals that Mr. Sebedra had mentioned of creating a regional destination that had a definite economic development component, as well as being an amenity to local residents. So, this shows the overall map of McGee Park. You can see in the middle is the very, the largest area that we had looked at is the racetrack infield, but then, other areas around the perimeter of the park, including the east park space, the central gathering space, which is where, right now, there's some turf grass, as well as the farm tractor equipment. We also looked at what could happen around the existing pond, and looking at some of the areas at the very southern tip of the park, a recreation space specifically to RV users, as well as an outdoor event space. And then, we looked also at internal circulation and internal development of other enhanced landscaped areas with small gathering spaces, and then also showed a preliminary location of a covered outdoor arena that could add to a lot of the different activities that are occurring as part of the state fair and throughout the year. So, the first area that we took a more in-depth look at was the east park space. Right now, this currently has a small turf grass area, as well as some older courts that are in not great shape, but looking at how that could be a place that provided a new opportunity for events. And in particular, one of the things that had come up was a pickleball complex. So, we're showing, you can see here, 14 courts, so five regular courts and two more championship-level courts, so that you could start at that level to start to encourage some of the different tournaments that might come, but then providing some space that are a little bit more resident-driven, so retaining a grass turf area, providing some courts, providing some children's play area, as well as a BMX pump track that all fit together in that space pretty nicely. And you can also see here that had come up, one of the things was a connection between this park over the Arroyo with a bridge, so that it's more connected with the rest of the McGee Park facilities. You can see here some of the images of what those could look like, different levels of gathering spaces, different play equipment, different courts, and the ability to have that pickleball complex. that pickleball complex, BMX pump track, which are becoming more and more popular, the ability to host tournaments and different events that would happen in those spaces. The next area that we took a more close look at was the RV recreation space. So this is down at the southern end, being able to provide things like courts, gathering spaces, some turf areas, some dog relief areas, some outdoor picnic and barbecue pits, those sorts of things that would be an amenity to be able to market to RV users who would be coming in that are looking at more of those kinds of amenities. You can see some of those here in some of these images with courts, with nature engagement, just different areas that allow people to have other recreation opportunities as they're coming into town for those RV destination areas. The next area that we took not a lot of detail because it's a very nice space that is, is now, but looking at the pond gathering space. This would be predicated on relining that pond and creating some different features that would allow the water quality to be a lot better so that it could be actually used for fishing, some of those uses that it currently is not allowed to use. So that that would give some perimeter walking trails. And this is another area that we looked at as being a columbarium for indigent folks who have passed away in the county so that there is an area where their ashes are, have a place to be located that has a little bit more reverence than is currently used. And so some of these are starting to look at, some of the, actually, the image on the upper left is at New Mexico State Park, at Bottomless Lake State Park, that showed a good example of having some of these different amenities, a columbarium. This is probably a little bit more intense design than what we'd be looking at, but just someplace that still had that ability to give folks a respectful resting place. And then with the water quality issues being addressed, that that actually uses some ability to have some other amenities that go along with the pond feature. Then the big facility on the site is looking at the racetrack infield. Those of you who participated in some of the earlier discussions and presentations, we had a variety of opportunities out there and actually settled in on something that was very simplified but gave maximum use, essentially looking at installing turf in that central area that would allow that to be a destination soccer or youth sports facility. We looked at the opportunity for stages, and in some of those earlier concepts had different locations and are showing now a temporary stage that could be located in different spots within the infield. At the bottom, it could be something that would be located by the sunray grandstands. So that goes to the earlier discussion of maintaining sunray. But it could be something where those grandstands could be used for those different stage events. Or it could be located on the north side so that folks could actually sit on the turf and attend a conference or a concert. Or it could be on the west or east, so it could be very flexible with that use. So not programming a lot of uses into that space, which still maintain a lot of the ability to have a very flexible use space.
So you can still do a balloon launch from there with all the rest of it, too?
That's correct, yes. So one of the things that we had shown before was trees and other amenities, and that actually, those came out with the idea that if it maintained being a racetrack, that you're not blocking the view of the horses as they go around, but it also facilitates not having trees for balloon events. So this would be something that allows you to have six full-size soccer so that you can start to attract some of the tournaments that are now going to Bern Leo. It also gives some opportunities. It doesn't show up, goes, if you go back to the very, very first, looking at some of the other perimeter trails and nature opportunities to engage the newly-acquired western property and having some equestrian. I will zoom back to the very first. So looking at some of these trail opportunities and perimeter within the spaces, that that's that property that's now labeled as Bosque Trails, looking at the yellow outlined areas as infill development that would allow market space that would be more, be able to be spread throughout the property.
Very good. In this drawing here, it doesn't show how we will access the inner part of that track. Are we going to be able to go underneath it or to, so we won't mess up the track?
I think that question comes down to whether the racetrack is still being used. If the racetrack is still being used, if the resolution is successful, then we would look at a tunnel that came underneath so that there wasn't disturbance of that track.
Keep our fingers crossed.
That's right, sir. If, for some reason, the track, so that's, that is actually one of the reasons why we left that ambiguous in this design, is that the hope would be that we maintain a track and that we would go underneath that with a tunnel, like you see at the Downs in Albuquerque. There's the tunnels that go underneath that don't impact the use of that track, but this allows for multiple options with that. So again, here's just some images of different ways that there could be paved trails, nature trails, market space, and even equestrian trails in that west side. And then this is that central gathering area. It's right now the small sort of parkland area. There is a road that bisects through it, so our proposal is to remove that road, create an off-leash dog area, dog relief area, so that that's something of benefit to RV users as well as other local community members. It just has some subtle paths that go through that to maintains a lot of the character that's out there. So shows some of those images of what could be in that space. And then the final space that we took a look at that was brought up by county staff was looking at the very southern end of creating an outdoor event space. So looking at an open-air pavilion, a support building, a small turf area, a river overlook. This is something that could be used for weddings, for quinceañeras, for that kinds of things. So it provides another level of use within the site for some of those more private events that might take place.
Can this be built with attachments of sorts to be able to put siding on it, some type of tent-like siding on it?
Yes, ma'am. I think that that would be exactly for inclement weather where you could roll it out to be able to have that. My daughter just got married three weeks ago, so I am fully in.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm fully in the mode of knowing how wedding facilities work now. So I channeled my inner father of the bride to.
Those adaptations that you need to make.
That's right. That's right. I gained a lot of perspective through that experience. So this design actually creates a covered area as well as the opportunity of having an outdoor space with a trellis and a potential river overlook that would have a space for lawn activities.
And you know, the other thing that I saw here, so the play equipment for kids. So that's, is that going to be one space or will there be multiple ones? I see it here, play equipment. So my question is, is that I have a grandson, as soon as he sees a bird, he follows it. So I'm just thinking it needs fences around it for all of that. And, you know, I don't necessarily want parents to drop their kids off at play equipment and go play pickleball, but I've seen that happen. So I'm just, you know, wondering if fencing just secure the kids in.
Yes, ma'am. That's something that, and you'll see that actually at our, at the Boundless Journey Adventure Park.
Right.
That just opened in Formington. Is that it just creates a level of security and a level of knowing where the kids are. So that's becoming more and more common in these kinds of spaces.
Okay. Thank you. Is that all? Is that all you had?
That was it. That was the quick version. I can get really detailed about it.
Thank you. That's excellent. Any other questions, comments?
I do have one question, Madam Chair. Is there a priority of, I mean, obviously, money has to come into play, but is there a priority of where we could start with that?
The most important slide. So I think that that's a decision that starts to, this is information to make those priorities. And it comes down to availability of funding, as everything does. So that if, say, you got $2 million, what is your priority? That's, I think, for you all to decide. If you've got $5 million, is it something that goes into one thing or does it go to multiple things? This provides and lays out the information for some of those areas so that you can start to be able to have that prioritization that would come based on funding.
I do have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Totochini.
In the 1970s, when I was in college, I had a classmate who was taking a class in leisure. And we laughed and we thought it was funny. But today, you know, with this going on, it promotes mental and physical health, and you have all kind of different types of trails. Pickleball is now talked about, pump track. It's just amazing, people trying to get outdoors and doing some sort of physical activity. So it's, it's like, we laughed in 1970 and then here it is. So it's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a comment, you know. My interest is in the covered outdoor arena because we have a huge following of people that utilize both the Coliseum and the Beef Barn. Huge numbers. I mean, there's trailers all over the place, and I would like to really see that covered arena big enough to where it can accommodate, you know, 100, 150-barrel racers or a small gathering or whatever it might be. That outdoor covered arena has got a lot of potential, and I really like that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We looked at a lot of different options about where that could go, and that's an existing outdoor arena that's uncovered. That would mean that you don't have to remove or change something else that's a permanent facility to get that. So we looked at a lot of different opportunities for where that could come.
Thank you. I like the design. I like.
Very nice. Good work, Stephen. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you for that.
Looks pretty exciting, so appreciate it.
Good job on the park, too.
All right. So now we'll move on to Consideration of Resolution Number 252633, Supporting the 2026 Legislative Priorities for New Mexico Counties. Mr. Stark.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As you, some of you know, this is an annual request from New Mexico counties. They bring this to each of the 33 counties to have the respective county commissions review and determine support for the upcoming legislative priorities. With this being a 30-day session, of course, you know, there has to be some type of financial nexus for those items to be considered or on the governor's call. And so I know that that was thought that was put into these priorities by the board, which I think everybody's aware that our chair also serves as the president of New Mexico County. So she can explain that process.
I can. I sure can.
Very full of the tale.
Yep.
But I'll just quickly run over these. They did a very nice job with a one-page handout. As you know, I like one-pagers. They're easy to understand.
Yes.
Mr. Neely does, too. But in essence, these are the priorities that they're asking for your review and support on. Most of these, quite frankly, have been previous legislative session requests. So number one, House Bill 2 appropriations, which that's the budget bill for the state of New Mexico requesting support, continued support for detention reimbursement funds. You know, we received some funding relative to detainees that we have that are understate-related charges, but by no means does that cover the cost of those. So the request is to ask for additional funding to bring that up to 9.3 million. Currently, the fund's at 5 million. Additional courthouse funding, this is to assist counties that are statutorily required to provide adequate space for courthouses. In fact, we had an item on the agenda and previously you've all taken action. We've been the beneficiary of funding for our expansion project next door with the Aztec District Court. Detention recruitment and retention as well as firefighter EMS recruitment fund, we've been the recipient of both of those. So that's assisted us in being able to recruit and retain both detention officers as well as firefighters. 700 megahertz radios doesn't apply to us per se because of the system that we have here that's not based on the 7 megahertz system, but other counties do. In fact, I think, as we were discussing this morning in our staff meeting, 32 of the other 33 counties do. And so that is important to them, to have continued funding for the 700 megahertz build-out of interconnectivity infrastructure. And then RISE funding, that's the last House Bill 2 piece of funding that's being requested. There again, we've been the recipient of that funding previously. We're not currently receiving that funding. Actually, a nonprofit was able to obtain that funding this year for San Juan County. But there have been a number of counties that have received that funding and the purpose of that program, RISE stands for Reach, Intervene, Support, and Engage to provide behavioral health, medically-assisted treatment, housing, vocational, and other services to people in detention. And we really utilize that funding to assist with reentry services for detainees that are leaving the adult detention center. So those are the House Bill 2 areas that they're requesting additional appropriation support from the legislature. Number two is IPRAC improvements. That's to amend the Inspection of Public Records Act to exempt from disclosing specific information and prohibit certain requests used to compromise and obstruct critical local government services. I would also add, just the sheer volume of those requests has gone up significantly, imposing a real undue burden on counties, municipalities. I could say that collectively here in San Juan County, you add up all of the FTEs that we have specific to responding to records requests, it's five total individuals, adding in different components that deal with the requests that we receive annually. So that's certainly a high priority for the counties at large. Given it's a 30-day session, I don't think that one's going to do quite well, but there's always, there's always hope.
That's right.
And then last but not least, the property tax exemptions deadline for veterans. This is to require all veterans to file for property tax exemptions within the existing property tax annual schedule to ensure equitable treatment for all taxpayers and allow counties to accurately budget for the fiscal year. Veterans would have 30 days after the notice of value to file an exemption or request an extension for up to the 180 days to resolve any delays in certification. That, you might recall, is the result of the constitutional amendment that was passed by the voters providing for those additional exemptions for veterans. And now it's the mechanics of actually putting it in place, and how's that going to work? And so that's the guidance provided by the assessors affiliate to the board, and the board of New Mexico counties has taken that up as a priority, given its significance to have, to have a process to move forward on. And also to make sure the impact to counties financially is taken into consideration. So with that, I could stand for any questions you have or defer them to our chair.
That'd be fine.
If there's something to the board process.
Yeah. And I think I've told most everybody, all the commissioners and staff, is how this, it's a very robust, robust process. So we start in about July, July or August, and we put, we have a conversation about what needs to be the legislative priorities. And like Mr. Stark said, some of these are the same ones that come forward. There's 33 counties in our state, and so this has to be things that we can come together. If we were real scattered and adversarial, none of this stuff would get done. We have some of the similar needs and some very different needs that we discuss. And how we handle that with that board is that they can also go, they're not necessarily endorsed by the, all 33 counties, but they can go talk to their legislators about the need in their counties. So, and what's nice is that they can get feedback as far as what's needed to maybe help them in what they're trying to achieve. So these are the ones that came out of the chute that everybody can support. And so that's where we are right now, and we will be having a meeting next week with the New Mexico Municipal League, and we're going to be discussing their priorities and seeing how we can collaborate with them and what they want to achieve in January. So are there any questions about that or? Okay. So at this time, if there's no. So at this time, if there's no other discussion or questions, then I'll need a motion to adopt this, please.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the Resolution 252633, supporting the 2026 legislative priorities for New Mexico counties.
I'll second.
Okay, vote first and second. All in favor? Opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. All right, thank you very much for that. And then next, we'll have number seven, the 2026 state and federal legislative request. Mr. Stark.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner. So this just tags along perfectly with the last item. That was the New Mexico counties list of legislative priorities. Now, we're getting to, okay, what would the county commission like to have for priorities for both state and federal legislative requests? We try to time these two up together. We try to gather our state legislators up usually the first week of December, so we can share with them your priorities, and specifically, when it comes to capital outlay, which we've been quite successful in years past, partly because of the strategy that we put together and working with all of you and our state legislators to try to fund projects last year, like the Crisis Triage Center, the Clerk's Office expansion and renovation projects, and try to maximize those dollars that are coming to San Juan County to meet the needs of our citizens and the priorities that you set forth. So before you are two infrastructure capital improvement plans. So I attached last year's and this year's, so you can see the difference. And, you know, we provide this to you all as guidance on using this list that you all adopted back in, gosh, I guess it was June of this year, to keep moving that deadline up, to have that reported to the state, and to determine what our capital priorities should be for next year. Historically, we've kept those priorities similar, so that we can, you know, our state requests are similar to our federal requests. Sometimes they differ a bit. But December 12th is the cutoff for submission to the state legislative capital request portal. So that's why we're bringing this to you now, so that we can prepare those documents that have to be entered into the portal, and also prepare a really extensive legislative book that we put together for our state legislators. And then ultimately do the same for federal requests. Oftentimes, we're presenting those during the NACO conference in DC in February. So I think there's plans for some of you to attend that again, to advocate on behalf of the county. So what we would request is your input on these projects. I would tell you that, just as a reminder, in previous years, you know, there's obviously a fixed amount of money to go around, and we've been told preliminarily that the guidance is you should expect San Juan County and San Juan County legislators to see about the same amount of money, although there has been some shrinking oil receipts on the state's side, and so I do think that may play into how much funding will be available. And of course, they won't exactly know until they arrive in Santa Fe the first part of January. But when you look at, you know, how we did last year with, you know, 7 million for the Crisis Triage Center, now half of that came from the governor's spot of funding. 3.5 million came from our legislators, which we really do appreciate. There's also funding for the Clerk's Office in the amount of $2 million. And then EMS, Station 6, we received $200,000 for the design of the new station in Farmington. And so when you look at our list for 2031, you see two projects that are one and two that you all had placed on there back in June. The first project is the Pinion Hills Boulevard Extension Project, which, as you all know, the city of Farmington's completing their phase of that project, and that road will be opening soon. But our phase is completely unfunded, and that's at $29 million. Likewise, a longtime project that we've been working on to regionalize sewer projects and expand economic development opportunities, as well as environmental opportunities for improvement. Floravista wastewater, you know, construction project, that's valued at $20 million. I would suggest those are probably not good capital outlay requests, because the amount of funding that we would more than likely receive, based on previous years, wouldn't allow us to even move forward, I mean, in some cases, even with the design. Although I'd say Pinion Hills, it's 90% designed, and actually Floravista's 100% designed. So that's probably a bad example. But nonetheless, it wouldn't fund a complete, even a phase of either one of those projects. So my suggestion would be to look further on down the list, to look at projects that would fit within that threshold of, you know, 3.5 to 4 million dollars.
Is the max five?
There's no, Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, there's no max. It really comes down to how legislators divvy up their funding. I have to say that our group of state legislators, unlike others in the state, work really closely together to find projects that they can, A, fund collectively, and B, complete. So what they don't want to do is what I was suggesting earlier, is you can't, you know, not to fund, you know, phases of projects that will never be completed, or incomplete phases of projects. They really want to find projects they know the entity, if funded, can pull off and complete.
So with that said, I was looking at the EMS. Right now, we need 2.2 million, but we have 200,000 there. So if we got 2 million, we could complete that, as well as looking at the ADA improvements to the county facilities, if we got another 2 million, or less than 2 million, really, those would be my two recommendations, but I'll definitely let the other commissioners talk, too, please. Have anything different than that, or what are you thinking?
Well, I agree with Mike. You can't fund a, something that can't move forward.
And this has been prioritized for a while. It's part of giving strategic planning and all that. So with what we're doing on the master planning of McGee Park, this would align as well, is what I'm thinking, of getting the additional funding.
Something that we can achieve.
And Madam Chair, that would be an example of where you could fund. We saw Mr. Miller's list of $27 million in projects, and actually, the first step there, that's the conceptual program phase of McGee Park. But to ask for 2 or 3 million dollars of funding that could be used for both designs, so that you could actually see firm plans of what these projects would look like, have a cost estimate developed, so you know exactly what they're gonna run, potentially make improvements to some of those areas where that funding would allow for immediate improvements. That would also be another great suggestion of a project. It's a little further down the list.
Is it? Where is it?
It's in year 2031, partly because of when the plan was gonna be completed, and more importantly.
Oh, I see.
How much would it cost to facilitate the entire plan? When we brought this to you in June, we didn't have those numbers. We actually have those numbers as of tonight.
Well, I think that would be good, too. Anything that has to do with McGee Park, we can't go wrong. So definitely after the presentation today, I think that's a good idea.
I like that idea, too.
Yeah. So do something with EMS that, we've already begun that, and then the McGee Park improvements. See what we can get there.
Madam Chair, do you, obviously, I think you're recommending the 2 million for construction on the EMS 6 station.
Uh huh, correct.
What was your recommendation on McGee Park?
Well, tell me what you think we can get. I mean, can we ask for five and see if they can offer that, what they have to offer? I mean, we don't know what they're gonna have, so.
Madam Chair, I've learned that it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
And all they could say is no, and maybe say, "No, but how about this amount?" And I think, quite frankly, given the stage of the product, where we're at with this project, any amount of funding would help, and I think could be utilized to help facilitate the next phase of that project, which is design.
Right.
And like I said, if design can be accomplished, then we could look at actually funding some of those improvement projects. They may be smaller in nature, but certainly would allow us to move forward.
Yeah.
We recommend that.
Well, with the possibility of there being limited funds, I think you definitely want to throw on there the senior citizen center facility improvements and equipment for Lower Valley and Blanco, since there's $200,000 on there. If, you know, there was just a small amount of extra money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Fund a smaller project.
You bet.
All right. All right. So.
Are those the amounts that the commission would like to move forward with, then?
Is that okay with y'all?
I think so.
Sounds good. Okay. So then I'll need a motion.
And I need one other item, Madam Chair, if I could. So just as awareness, the GROW fund may become available this legislative session again. Two years ago, we were surprised at the start of the session and needed to respond back in three days on funding that we might be able to utilize that was gonna be made available to each legislator.
Okay.
And it was to fund specifically, not capital, but programs. And this is called, GROW stands for Government Results and Opportunity. Because behavioral health was such a big priority for us at the time, and also the request from legislators through the COG, was that we try to find regional partnerships by which to make a request. In the short timeframe, we submitted on behavioral health-related projects in conjunction with the city of Farmington and the San Juan Regional Medical Center. Specifically, that was to help fund existing programs that we worked collaboratively on together, such as the Joint Intervention Program, the Sobering Center. Those are the programs that are administered by Presbyterian Medical Services at the Campus of Care. And so we were made aware, and I think I sent an email to you from Evan Williams with the COG, suggesting this funding may be available again.
Okay.
And so I wanted to get your input on where we should be focusing that funding again, if you want to continue with behavioral health in some form or capacity, or if you want to look at other programs that we need to focus on. Part of what the legislature is looking for is they want to be able to show that you've got programs that deliver results, and that there's metrics to show that these dollars that are being invested in your community are having an impact. The programs I mentioned earlier, it's easy to show that, because we keep a strong track of those.
I agree.
But I want to make sure, I don't want to presume what the commission would like to do with those dollars, but I do know if it happens like it did last time, they won't know about the funding until the session starts.
Right.
And then we'll get asked very quickly to provide input on where we'd like to work, what partners in the community, and then where would we like that funding to be directed towards.
Well, it seems as though that's kind of the pathway, and what's on the radar in Santa Fe as well, is anything behavioral health, and we have the documentation to support that right now, is what I'm thinking. So if something comes up all of a sudden, we know what we need. So what about y'all? Any thoughts?
That's the one we've been working on, working so hard as to acquiring. That's a good idea.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, that's correct. And so we utilize those, specifically those funding, that funding last time benefited JIP, the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. Jointly, the city of Farmington received funding for the Alternative Response Unit, which is a behavioral health-related program. And then the truancy program. We received dollars to administer that program. So all kind of interconnected and benefiting behavioral health.
And that's really important, the meeting I was at on Friday with FMS. They were talking about that 23% of the youth in our area are not in school or employed, 23%. So that's right there, but I'm talking about truancy is a major need, so. Okay. Any other recommendations? Okay. So do we put those together, request the GROW and the legislative request, we can do a motion for both of those together?
That would be probably appropriate to do that. And that way, we staff has direction on what your priorities are.
And we know what that is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I need a motion on that.
And if you'd like me to, I could just share what was mentioned.
Yeah.
$2 million for EMS Station 6, $5 million for McGee Park improvements, and $200,000 for senior citizen facility improvements and equipment, Lower Valley and Blanco.
So that's 7,200,000?
That is correct, Commissioner Gonzalez, yes.
You know, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think $1,285,000 for that bridge construction on County Road 6675 might be something that we might be able to introduce and see if we get that. It doesn't hurt to ask.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, we actually, good news, Mr. Perrell might have forgotten, he actually has that approved and funded by the state, so.
What's it doing?
As you know, he's very good at finding dollars elsewhere.
Mark that off the list. It's pretty fast. Okay, one I hadn't noticed, Mr. Stark, is that the county road improvements, again, not a big amount that we would be asking for this go-round. Because what did we receive last year? Close to nine?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lanier, we didn't receive any funding related to capital outlay for road improvements, but we do receive a variety of different funds from the state relative to that annually.
Okay. But all of the things that we received for Crisis Triage Clerk's Office, all of that totaled 9 million-ish?
Seven, yeah, 9.2 million.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and what are we currently at, asking for?
Well, we're at 2 million, yeah, 7.2 million. Now, last year, we did have the benefit, first year in the history of the county, I think, that we had the governors contribute funding to the projects. So 3.5 of the 9.2 million was from the executive branch.
Right. Okay.
Is there any others on this list that have already been taken care of?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, yes. You know, we put some placeholders in here, sometimes that we can, when we're applying for grants, we can show that there's been thought put into some of the needs. So for example, replacement fire apparatus. Certainly, we could utilize additional apparatus. So if you wanted to add that as a request, you could. You know, it helps to offset some of the funding that we have to put forth annually to help replace equipment in the county. ADA improvements, we allocate funding within the budget annually. It doesn't cover the entire amount that we have remaining, but that does happen. And I'm happy to report that we're probably 90% complete with all ADA improvements within the county. It's been a very long effort, going back to 2015, I believe, when we were working on those. Some of the other projects you see here, we do have funding that we've either received or in the works of trying to receive. So by no means are all these projects funded, but county road improvements, for example, we place that on there as a placeholder. Back in the day, it used to be we could apply for, and the state legislature really liked this, and we did, too, that we provide, they provide $100,000 of materials, and we ask for, or provide $100,000 of labor and equipment. So it shows that we have skin in the game, and that way, the funding gets stretched out to allow for more chip ceiling of county-maintained roads.
I think we can all agree that county roads are.
Certainly, certainly. So if we were to request funding, it could be broad for road improvements in general, or it could be specific to a road. Mr. Perrell and the Public Works Team have a very robust schedule, as you know, of what that maintenance schedule needs to be over time for the various series of roads, but we could certainly make that a broad request if you'd so like.
I would like to see that. Don't you guys?
Okay. How much would you?
Well, you have on there a million, so.
Okay.
I just had a question, not that I'm asking for this, but the hospital has the cardio-pulmonary endoscopy unit renovations, and I know they've done some renovations that in the recent past. That's not the same thing. It's different than what they've been doing?
Madam Chair, it is different. You know, and we are, San Juan County taxpayers own the hospital, and it's leased to San Juan Regional Medical Center, and so by way of that, the nexus of local government ownership, we're able to, and they're able to, request capital outlay funds, which have helped to make a number of improvements at the hospital. And so that is the next improvement that they're looking for. Generally speaking, they do those requests separate of us.
Okay.
But it has to be on our infrastructure capital improvement list. Otherwise, it could fall subject to a line item veto. I mean, still, it's fall subject to a line item veto, but your opportunities are bolstered if it has, if it's on your list.
I see, P. Okay.
I think we're good.
What's that?
Madam Chair, Mr. Stark, would it be?
Madam Chair, Mr. Stark, would it be, as long as we're asking, would it be inappropriate to ask for anything for a five-mile bridge? I still have that in my mind.
Sure.
Or are we pursuing that with other grant money requests?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner McDaniel, you know, that's, that's one, given the size of the project. I know on this list, it's showing 13 million. It's more like an $18 million project. So you, you know, you could request funding for design, but it's probably not necessarily appropriate for capital outlay because we'd never be able to see something like that fully funded. It falls into the category of the Pinion Hills project and the Flora Vista project, where the just sheer enormity and size of the project just doesn't make it a very good capital outlay request. So we, I know Mr. Perrell's, we had two federal grant applications that unfortunately we were not successful with, but that more than likely is the best avenue by which for us to see that project funded, just given location and size of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions or conversation, do I have a motion for what our list has been created?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the 2026 state and federal legislative requests.
Do you want me to list those off for you, Madam Chair?
Do you need that? Okay.
And do you want, and this is another thing I need to ask you, in this priority, so you can tell me if you want adjusted priority.
Yeah.
Two million for EMS Station 6, five million for McGee Park improvements, $200,000 for senior center facility improvements and equipment for Lower Valley and Blanco, and a million for county road improvements.
Okay, good, all right. So I have, I agree, okay, so.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing non, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stark. All right, so we'll move on, consideration of Resolution Number 252632, adjusting precinct boundaries. County Clerk, Ms. Kuhn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Pursuant to NMSA Section 1-3-1, a precinct shall be divided or its boundaries adjusted if the precinct has more than 750 votes cast by voters of that precinct at a general election based on the two most recent general elections. And then pursuant to NMSA 1-3-5, it's the, it is the duty of the Board of County Commissioners by resolution to create, divide, abolish, combine, or adjust the boundaries of any precinct as necessary to meet the requirement of the Election Code. And then however, NMSA Section 1-3-1D2 prohibits any adjustment that crosses any local, state, or federal district or districted boundary lines. And I want to be clear about this, this statute's very specific. The only adjustments that are being done are precincts that have over 750 votes that were in the last 2024 general election, and this only affects the areas of Farmington and Aztec. So those precincts are Precinct 30, 38, 39, 50, 57, 60, 61, 67, 69, 103, and 107. And you guys have maps that were attached to your staff summary. And if adopted, we will send a certified copy of this resolution to the Secretary of State to review for compliance with the Precinct Boundary Adjustment Act. We will also send certified copies to each major political party chair, and we will publish the resolution once in the tri-city record. And I will stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Clerk Kuhn?
She knows, she knows what's going on.
All right, is there anything, Mr. Stark or Mrs. Sawyer, you'd like to add to this?
Madam Chair, not, not for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, and this will go to the Secretary of State to review.
Yes.
Look at what we're doing here.
Yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, in consideration of Resolution 252632, adjusting the precinct boundaries, I move to approve the action.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing non, motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, now we have report from our county manager, Mr. Stark.
Madam Chair, thank you. You'll probably be happy to know I have a very short report for you tonight, a lot of the lengthy meeting. I just want to make sure that you all are aware, and I know it's been placed on your calendars, but for the public's benefit, Perrell was able to make contact with NMDOT for our annual highway cleanup, which is one of the ways by which we look to make, make us shine, which is one of our strategic initiatives, to clean up the county and associated roadways. And so, we work with NMD collective, NMDOT collectively. That's going to happen Thursday, November 20th. And so we're going to look to do that. If you'd like to participate, we'd love to have you. Like I said, that's on your, your calendars, and it's also good awareness for citizens that it's a way by which we look to clean up. What most people normally see is roadside litter, that's where it gets frustrating when they see that. And we wanted to be part of that solution. Certainly, that's New Mexico DOT right-of-way. We would, we would offer up that that should be cleaned on a more frequent basis by them, but here we are to help with our county resources and staff for that, for that one-day event. Historically, we've cleaned up quite a few miles of highway mileage, last year completing a stretch from Aztec to the state line and back. Now, that's quite a bit of mileage, so we don't know what's planned for this year, but we'll put together a list of highways. Previously, we've done Kirtland from 64 to Water Flow, just try to cover areas by which state DOT tells us they need assistance with, so we leave it up to them. We'll make sure you're aware of that, and one of our continued efforts to help beautify San Juan County.
That's always a good thing.
Yes.
Thank you. There's lots of weeds besides trash. All right, thank you, is that all you have?
That's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, and I just wanted to say for my part that we had a gentleman that was a long-term part of our county, Tony Atkinson, passed away. And he did so much for our county. I know personally, he was a mentor. He got me to be involved in leadership San Juan, leadership New Mexico, and just was an all-around gentleman and very smart. He serves as county manager and on the county commission, and I don't even know how many years he was in the county, so.
Madam Chair, 35 years in the public service.
And his daughter Jennifer works.
Works for San Juan County at the detention center.
At the detention center. So just wanted to send our condolences to the family. And from my understanding, the funeral is going to be at the Elks Club on Friday, November 14th, and they've asked everybody to wear a Hawaiian shirt or bright colors in honor of Tony, so he will be missed. So, are there any reports from department heads?
Madam Chair, I just want to make a comment. As part of my leadership San Juan, I did a ride-along with Corporal Julian Moore on Halloween night. It was very fun, it was very interesting, and it was great to see a side of law enforcement that, that I've never been able to see, so thank you, Julian.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else up here? Anybody, department head? Go ahead, you have something to say, please come forward. Hello.
Madam Chair, commissioners, today, we were just informed this afternoon, so I'm happy to report that we were successful on all three of our state grants today.
Awesome, so tell us what those represent.
So one is for a fire apparatus, $600,000.
Okay.
One is for a breathing air compressor for Bloomfield, $125,000, and we got a $25,000 nominal fee.
Okay. Congratulations on that, that's a big deal. So thank you for sharing that with us. Okay, thank you. All right, Nick, come on up. You always have good things to say. Keep it very informed.
Commissioner, I'll give you a quick bridge update. Our project on 3,000 backfill operations are scheduled to be complete this week, our major backfill operations, following which it's, it's prepped the site for asphalt and restore the river channel on 3,500 structural concrete, scheduled to be completed this week, and then backfill operations will commence, so when we meet again in December, I think I'll have a great idea when the projects are going to stand for the winter for you.
Okay, good deal, thank you for that. All right, any other department heads? Okay, I don't see anybody running up here, so at this point, then, we will take public comment. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, on subjects the commission has not previously discussed, or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. So if you want to come forward to the lectern and state your name and address the commission, please.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Put the mic to your.
Madam Chair, and commissioners, my name is Carmel Martinez, this is my husband, Lucas Martinez. We are from San Juan Estates. We are here to request County Road 5295 and 5297 to be chip sealed. I'm sure you all received my letter with the two petitions that I dropped off on October 10th. We have 31 signatures, and I have 13 more, so I have copies of those. I will continue to work with the remainder of the landowners that haven't signed due to me not finding them, or they have a big dog, and I can't get, and I can't get to the door.
Oh, it's Lucas.
Really. Anyway, County Road 5295 and 5297 are considered low maintenance, so they get bladed twice a year. That usually lasts like a week. I have lived there, or we have lived there, 38 years, and the traffic has increased, which has increased the wear and tear on those roads. There are two county roads to the west that are chip sealed or have magnesium, which is County Road 5299 and 5324. I don't know if that makes a difference, but we don't have anything, so.
Next door.
Yeah, next door. And so these are some of the complaints from the landowners. How many people here? There's six of them.
Okay.
Lack of gravel, too much dust, lack of blading, damage to our vehicles, many people with allergies, and when it rains, we get so many potholes, we have to drive in the medium to get to the highway. I took some pictures that I can give you guys of the potholes from that last rain. They were huge. We all understand there will be costs to the landowners and that it will be billed to us on our property taxes, and I understand it'll be bailed out 30 years out. We would truly appreciate your consideration and helping us get this project going, and it's not going to be 275 million, I know. Anyway. Yes, we could have a page.
You can give it to Mr. Sawyer, if you like. And Carmel, thank you for your presentation, and as you saw today, the pathway to making things happen, so thank you for your diligence in that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
How, what's, what's the, how, how long is it? A mile, half a mile?
I do know. Total is about, max, two miles all the way around. The first mile, first, the entrance is like a half a mile from 5295 to 5297, only a half a mile. And that's the worst part of it, really.
The dinosaur tree.
Everybody goes through there, then they some of them go around, and most of them go through 5297. 5297, the potholes, even after they grade them, they grade them to the point where you can still see the ripples. You know, go beyond that and redo it, they just skim it over, fill the potholes with the existing gravel that's in there. Two days later, it's the same way. It's just the terrible, on our trucks, cars, and the dust is just out. And people don't slow down anyway, it's just, this condition of the road makes them slow down by a bit. They, they tears up the vehicles, the dust down here.
Okay, thank you for your input. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Janice Snell, and I'm also here about County Road 5295. We've lived on the road since 1986, so 39 years, and we also would like to request that it be reclassified, and I guess the residents are willing to change that so they can pay for the chip seal. But my husband and I, our biggest concern is, you guys thought that the Speedway, it was on 20th Street in Farmington, Speedway is also on 5295. It's a double road, and we often have people racing up and down, and it's very concerning that the speed is so fast on that road. It is, it is zoned 25 miles an hour, even the buses, Farmington School buses drive faster than 25 miles per hour. And so with the dust problem and the, the roughness of the road, that is also a major concern with the speed.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Janice.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
One thing.
If you'll identify yourself, please.
I'm Arthur Garcia, and I've lived down there 34 years. The main thing that I think the county has a problem with is the pipeline that goes down the center of 5295. I see it as being a big problem because when the road gets so rutted, people drive in the center and use, I mean, they're driving over that pipeline anyway. We gotta do something, people, because it's horrible. In the summer, you, you look down, if you come off the highway and you look down, you can't even see down if people or kids are playing out in the road or whatever. You can't see them for the dust that's down there, it's horrible. It's really bad. And my wife was real sick this summer, and man, the dust got her pretty bad. And we just ask you to consider the amount of people that live down that road in 5297. I actually live on 5297, and the racetrack continues through there also. You know, we just ask you to please consider it. Go for a ride down there, please.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much.
And also, if we could have some kind of sheriffs or, or some kind of law enforcement at least once a month, maybe, down there. We never seen anybody in there. Never, unless we call them. But thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Thank you, Carmel.
Thank you, Carmel.
All right, is there any other comments? Go ahead.
Hi, everybody, good evening. My name is Alyssa Begey. I am a community advocate. I am, wear several hats, and today I wanted to tell you about a hat I wear with the New Mexico Department of Justice MMIP Task Force, that's Missing Murdered Indigenous Peoples Task Force. So this task force was disbanded and re-banded together, and I was actually part of the re-band, which started last year in October, and since, we have been addressing six objectives within the state response plan, and we've been meeting quarterly since last October. I'm coming before you today as a consultant on that task force. I joined under the Farmington Women's Business Center as a means to end the poverty-to-prison pipeline. So as such, I'm helping to advocate and bring the task force into the community, which I've done for December 6th of this year. At Walter Collins in Upper Fruitland, the NMDOJ MMIP Task Force is hosting a holiday gathering for families who are impacted by the MMIP crisis. So that means all the task force members from the state, there is over 30 of us, we are in various capacities, there's police officers, politicians, representatives, consultants like myself who sit on this task force, and they are coming to the families to get one-on-one time with them, see what gaps exist, and in a sense, turn the task force members into advocates for their open, ongoing cases. I'm asking the commissioners and inviting you all to attend this event, December 6th. It'll be from 4:00 to 7:00. This task force is comprised of pretty much volunteers. I'm a business owner within this community, so I don't get paid for this. I'm a business owner within this community, so I don't get paid for this, but I do, I would like to see the commissioners there, just to show the families that we are supportive of them. That is going to be December 6th. The second event is December 12th, that is a task force meeting, and this state response plan update is what's going to be happening that day. There is a Zoom option or in-person. The in-person will be at the Pueblo of Isleta, and that will be from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and I sent this information to Mr. Stark, so you have it. Again, this is really important for us to support the families who are within our communities, not only as leaders within our communities, but also as neighbors. I really appreciate your time tonight and look forward to working with you for the betterment of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Begay. Appreciate that.
Yes.
All right, do we have any other comments, or anybody else would like to come forward? All right, I'm not seeing anybody, so at this time, unless anybody else...